Who wants to read the minutes from last month?
I could read them. Trustee meetings, November 8, 2022. Meeting called to order at 6:06 PM. Present Director Jen Crosby, Chair Paula Latte, Kate Mercier, Denise Conti, Candace Cerbero, Teri LaFerrari. Absent Janice Cook, Michelle Petrus, Nita Abbott, Helen Hurtel. Meeting of last month's trustee meeting were read. Denise's motion to accept is read, seconded by Teri. A vote was taken and all were in favor of accepting the minutes. Directors' report. Building and operations update. Request to add one additional computer to the ICQ quote. Machines are less than expected, 782 each. And it would be beneficial, I think we need to put right there, to have the director's office computer done at the same time for future upgrades. A motion to vote on adding an additional computer was made by Candace and seconded by Teri. Current statistics update for October. 4,375 circulations with a circulating value of $55,578.94. There were 2,971 network transfers, 2,425 shared to other libraries, and 546 from other libraries. Total circulation is a bit less than last month, but our busy hours show that Saturdays have spiked a lot of traffic. Discussions about holiday hours. The board decided we will stay open normally on Friday, December 23, and December 30. The board was undecided about closing on December 24 and December 31. Paula is going to talk to Kathy Leonard to see what the town administration suggests and what they will be doing. We will revisit this at our next meeting on Tuesday, December 13. Holiday baskets will be available on December 30. Policy work. Mission statement. The changes suggested encompass our need to focus on safety, equity, and inclusion, and a focus on the well-being of our patrons as well as their lifelong learning goals. The main idea is to shorten the mission statement to the typical one or two sentence structure followed by a clear vision statement. Jen shared the importance of making our library mission statement more inclusive and access for all. She researched other library statements and came up with a valuable inclusive statement. Kate suggested we add the word equitable to the first sentence as follows. Mission statement amended. The mission to Grammy-free libraries to inspire lifelong learning, strengthen the community, and provide equitable access to all in a safe and welcoming space. The library strives to provide access to information and technology, social and civic engagement, and support for personal environment, well-being, and lifelong learning. Vision statement. Inspiring a lifetime of learning, personal growth, and community engagement. Candace made a motion, I think there's too many maids there, to accept the mission statement and vision statement as amended. Teri seconded it. Upcoming virtual trustee orientations are offered on Thursday, November 10 at 10:00 AM and Thursday, November 17 at 6:00 PM. Warrants were presented in the amount of $2,980.49 Baker &amp; Taylor, Blackstone Publishing, Inglewood Entertainment, and the Library Store. Motion was made by Teri to accept the warrants and have Paula, chairperson on the board, sign them. Denise seconded the motion. Additional personnel to add to the library staffing. Especially the circulation desk was discussed. Jen met with the town administrator, Chris Martin, and shared with him the job descriptions for the future positions needed at the library. The next step would be to meet with the personnel board, which will meet on Wednesday, November 16 at 6:00 PM, to present the job description and answer any questions about the proposed position of positions. They will assign a rating that will provide a pay scale for that position. From there, Chris Martin, the town administrator, would ascertain if these positions could fit into the budget and if approved by the town administrator will go before the finance committee. If all goes to plan, the two new part-time positions will begin in the new fiscal year, July 1, 2023. Other. Paula shared that Xander Huff will be the new treasurer for Friends of the Library as of October 20, 2022. Xander and Paula had put their names on the accounts at the Florence Savings Bank. Reminder that the coffee and chocolate event entitled "The Perky Pairing: Coffee and Fine Chocolate" is taking place at the library on Saturday, December 10 at 11:30 AM. Interesting history. Benefits. How and where coffee and chocolate hail from. The famous pioneers in both industries. Interactive trivia quiz. Best brewing and roasting methods. And fun coffee terminology will be part of the presentation. There will be a chocolate tasting meal for each patron. Also part of the event will be displays of vintage coffee grinders and coffee pots, chocolate samplings that include espresso chocolate, coffee cup molded chocolates, bittersweet, and even a classic decaf Italian avocado. Space may be limited, so those interested must sign up ahead of time.
Oh, they're trying to get in. Jen just went to the door. So if you could open up the curtain and just point or look behind the curtain.
Someone's coming.
We're coming. We're coming.
Go, go, go.
What was it?
It's either Michelle. So where were the last women? You might have hit the doorstopper and it might have shut.
I didn't. I don't think I did.
No, I know.
Unless the board did it as it closed.
Yeah.
She's going to the door. We just told Michelle.
Okay, I just propped it open. But it must have, the thing must have gotten bumped out.
Did you hear something? Is that what we do?
Well, I got a text. And I ran to go do it. Nobody was out.
And she came here and banged on the window.
I'm looking around like, nobody's here. I'm being punked. We just knew it.
A motion was made to adjourn the meeting by Candace at 7:00 PM and seconded by Denise. Our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, December 13, 2022 at 6:00 PM. Respectfully submitted, Kate Mercier, substitute secretary.
I do have, on the first paragraph, excuse me, the company is ICS, not ICQ, so we'll have to change that. And Kathy Leonard is with a C, not a K.
That section that had too many motions were made?
Yes. Get rid of that was made. And then Xander spelled it with a X rather than a C.
Well, I've been out there since like two minutes.
My gosh.
Banging on the doors and running around to all the windows.
Must have just missed it.
I know. I had the thing in the door. I don't know what happened to it. But then when I went out there, you guys run there and were hello.
In the dark, in the snow.
Running around.
We just started and we just did a reading of the minutes.
Okay. If you guys want to do the vote.
Candace, did you finish?
Yes, I did.
Okay. So someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as read with corrections as stated.
I'll second this.
We'll wait for Jen to come back. Do the writer's director's report. Oh, I'll in favor. It's been a while since I've had to step into each. Let's just say I really did.
Oh, mine. Oh, my gosh. Please, my brain is scary. Okay. So we are. Okay, the motion was made by Teri, seconded by Denise, and read by Candace. Okay, beautiful.
Can I just go back and ask? The virtual trustee orientations, are those like done? Or are you able to, are we able to access those?
They may have recordings of them.
They do. If you look, if you log in and you go to the search and you type in, if you go to the state board website, which I think is in a lot of these emails we get, and you just log in, you know, orientations, they have an online orientation that you can do. Because I've done it, I think, almost every year because I have to get it to get the link to send to you guys. So when I'm in there, I'm actually going through it. I'm looking at it going, oh, okay. So it's, yeah, it's always out there.
Yeah, you should be able to pull them up. I remember we did a recording of the things.
There's a lot of trainings out there now, which we never had out there before, which is really nice.
Kind of nice to watch it like at your own leisure and stuff and see what everybody else has to say. The shot.
Hi.
You're, I do.
Um, okay. So I didn't do a policy work tonight, but I thought it's Christmas almost.
Do you have a direct report?
I do, I do. I can be the one that I didn't bend. So we don't have a policy to work on tonight. We're taking a little break from that until next month. Yeah, we give our brains a break. It's Christmas. I'll take this one back. So for my building and operations update, most of you are probably aware that we are a little short-staffed. We have a staff member out on medical leave with a knee replacement surgery. She will be back in, I think, four to eight weeks, depending on how it goes.
All of that because she's walking.
It's been two weeks now. So I'm planning for the longest possible and then hopefully we'll be surprised. But we've had a lot of volunteer help. We have a couple of new volunteers on board that have been helping and I have a bunch of people on call. So if one of us does get sick or something happens, we have extra people to back us up. Our staff computers have been replaced. We have all new machines. They're working really well. Everything's going great. It was nice to have ICS out here because he showed me a couple of tips and tricks. It was helpful. We did get awarded state aid as of December 1. Our initial award is $9,259.67 and that's just the first half. The second half is usually right around the same amount. So.
How's that rate compared to last year?
I want to say we got about 17, or 7,000 last year-ish. Yeah, they've been really generous with state aid. I don't know how long it'll last, but we'll use it as long as it's available to us.
So does that have to be used for specific items, areas?
It does. We use it for any items that are going to be used by the public. So that can include copy machines, computers. It can be anything that the public can take home with them. So like the hotspots, tablets, books.
Programs?
Not for programming, unfortunately. But we get pretty well taken care of with our programs by the friends. This is mostly for like books and items that the public can come in and use.
I'm guessing you already have a long wish list for that money?
You know, we're so fortunate. We have such a great book budget. And we have, and Janice just spent a little chunk of money on social emotional books for the children's room. It's been like a really high demand item. So kind of like we're replenishing after we spent that. So spending probably a lot of it on books and materials. I would love to get a couple of tablets in the building. So it might be something that we can look into, having some tablets here people can use. One thing I've noticed that the public has been asking for lately is like a laptop that has a camera on it because a lot of people are doing Zoom now and they have like, have to do like a test or something and it's in person, online. And so really people will come in and say, you know, I need a place to sit and do this. And you know, do you have a computer that has a camera on it? And none of our computers are equipped with cameras. So possibly.
They have the little ones to, you can hook on top.
Like I was sort of thinking, there's something we can hook to.
It's a software that you get that hooks to the camera. And that'll work. And they're not that expensive.
A computer in there.
Do it on, I would do, I'd do a couple.
Well, because they can't, they can't do it on the computers out here because it would be too distracting. But a computer they could take with them into this room, like if we have a laptop, then they could take in here, close themselves in, or if they could use the computer in that room to kind of close themselves in. That's kind of on my wish list. And the other thing people have been asking for is wireless access to our printing. So they come in with their phone and they want to print, you know, what I have on my phone right now. And I'm like, oh, unfortunately, you have to email it to yourself and pick up your email on our computer and print it that way, which is a real pain in the neck. A lot of people have a really hard time remembering their email passwords. So they're like, great, I can email it to myself. And then they sit down at the computer and they're like, oh, I don't know what my password is. Because like you get it automatically.
It's just automatic.
Right.
Your printer's not Wi-Fi?
Our printer is Wi-Fi, but it doesn't, it's not like accessible to the public. It's like all of our machines.
Is behind the firewall?
Hooked to Wi-Fi, yes. So we have to figure something out with ICS to do. They've got to take their firewall down and do what they got to do. But that's another thing I would really like to do.
That would be an easy decision.
And we can definitely spend the money on that, getting people access to that. Because that's a big thing people ask for that I always feel bad. Because as much as I can help them, I cannot help them remember their passwords. And then you do the whole like password, forget your password. And then they're like, oh, it texted me. And they're like, I don't have my phone with me. Or, you know, like it sent a thing to this other email.
Do you remember that woman that used to come in? She used the computer and she couldn't, she never remembered her password. She would get mad somehow.
You so mad.
Yeah, she'd get really irate, like it was all the library's fault that she couldn't get an inter or email.
It happens more often than you would think. And it's just like so hard to keep a straight face and like, I love you so much, but I am not a psychic. Where I probably, what if you working here? I'd probably be off in Vegas somewhere right now. Doesn't work always, maybe. Yeah. So there have been a lot of people, they do, they get so mad. They might not necessarily be mad at me, but it comes off as being mad at me. And I'm like, wow, not in my wheelhouse. Hard enough for me to remember my own passwords. So those are a couple of really big items that I'd like to look into that I will put on a wish list. And let's see, our yearly library building inspection was completed. We usually do that every December. Comes in, checks all of our smoke detectors, all of our fire exit signs, make sure everything's working properly. And we're having our alarm test done actually tomorrow. They come in and do a yearly alarm test to make sure our alarm is still working properly. So that always happens end of year. And then our staff development committee, me and Paula, attended the personnel board meeting. The circulation job description was reviewed and they rated it for the wage scale as a grade two. It's kind of hard to say exactly what that's going to be right now because the town hasn't put out their cost of living assessment for next year. But the current pay scale of grade two starts at $15.71 an hour. So that will be, it'll be a little bit more than that with whatever cost of living increase is assessed onto that for next fiscal year. So now, you know, we've put it in, we've got it out there. They've rated it. They know that our goal is to have two of these 15-hour positions at that rate. Now it goes to the finance committee and the customer, the town meeting and all that fun stuff, see if we can squash it in our budget. So we got the first step done. I think, you know, we're on a, we're on a good track. The meeting went really well. It was really well received, I think.
Do you have to do another presentation to the next board?
If they request it. Depends, we'll kind of see how it goes from there. And then we may or may not have to present it at town meeting. If, you know, it's read and people are in favor, we might not have to. But I'll definitely make sure to have something prepared in case people do want to know why our budget's a little bit more than it was before. And we're not breaking the bank with $15 an hour. But any change, there's always the possibility it will be questioned. So we'll definitely make sure we have all of our ducks in the road and we have the answers to the questions that may be asked. I'll let everybody know like what the next steps are as soon as I find out. Our current statistics for November, we had 4,407 items circulated, which was more than last month, a little bit. Our total value of items circulated was $53,000. And 481 items were brought in from other libraries for our patrons. And we shared 2,241 of our items with other libraries throughout the month. Saturdays have been consistently steady in conjunction with all of our events we kept going on. It's been very busy, but it's been great. And then to recap our holiday hour discussion, we have gone into the bylaws. And the bylaws states that a holiday which occurs on a Sunday shall be taken on Monday immediately thereafter. So we're to treat these two holidays as if it were a Monday holiday, which our policy is to be closed the Saturday beforehand. So we're going to try to work it out. We're a little short-staffed now. It will take the Saturday and there will be a couple more hours to play around with. But, you know, if we can, one of us can leave early if we have enough help at another time during the week, if that's the way it works out. But that was an easier fix. I should have probably just looked at the bylaws to begin with. But I wasn't thinking clearly. I was kind of like not thinking about it at the time, but that's how we will handle that. So I don't know, one more time? Sure. Just closing on Saturday? So we'll be closing on the Saturday before Christmas and the Saturday before New Year's to honor the Monday holiday.
For the full day Friday?
Full day Friday, 23rd and the 13th.
Well, that's what she said. She's got to make up the hours.
Listen, we're, staff is entitled to a seven-hour holiday pay. Even though we don't work on Mondays, we have to plug it in somewhere. So it does, we do a Saturday, that's a three hour. We can stretch it to four if we need to. But then it's another three hours that, you know, our staff have the rest of the week to kind of plug in. So if I know I have, I've already talked to my Friday volunteer. I'm like, if you know you're going to be here, I might, you know, let Jean leave a few hours early Friday. You know, maybe I'll take the next Friday as long as I have.
Oh, you just got to, yeah. That's what I was just going to ask. Do you have to do it?
You do have to.
Yeah, it does. It has to be in that key period, so, you know.
How is traffic routinely during that Christmas week? Christmas, New Year's week?
It's pretty quiet. I feel like people are so crazy doing what they've got to do. But then we do it the last minute. People that come in saying, oh, you know, we need movies, we need this, we need that.
I didn't know if you were busy because the kids are off from school.
Right. Which a lot of people travel, so it's, it's not overwhelming. So we think we'll be okay. But, you know, it's kind of a funny thing because a lot of people are away. A lot of people are doing other things. But then there are people who like they have their kids home and by the end of the week, you're like, okay, now what do we do with these children? And we will be having playgroup for the kids this next week coming, but there won't be playgroup the week in between Christmas and New Year's for that little break. So it might be quieter than two without all the little kiddos coming in the mornings. So we think, I think we'll be okay. We've been working out pretty well as it is with the staff and the volunteers we've got lined up. So we kind of answered our own question with the holiday hours. We didn't have to meet and vote, which was worked out pretty well. The other thing I did, if no one else has any questions about that, I did print out a copy of the first page of our expenditure report for everyone. We talked about that at our last meeting, just so everyone gets an idea of what it looks like. So this is our budget. You see, if you look on, we're kind of toward the bottom where it says general fund. You'll see our total budget was $208,466 for the year. And then you'll see like what was expended in October, what was expended here to date in each category, and then what our unexpended balance is through June. And there are two more pages that go with this, but they're all of our special accounts, like all of our gift accounts. And those balances haven't been transferred over yet, excuse me. So they're all at zero right now. Doesn't mean that there's zero in there, but they just haven't been carried over yet by town hall. So I didn't want to confuse everyone and be like, we don't have any money. So for, once I get that, I'll bring that to the meeting. So maybe our next meeting or two, we can talk about that. But this shows our salary, wages accounts, longevity pay. The, and then right under longevity is where our operating budget starts. We have the repairs and maintenance. We have our telephone budget, our postage, our computer network purchase, books, our supply budget. We don't do mileage anymore. Our subscriptions budget and then a total, a little running total at the bottom. So you can kind of see where we're at with everything. We have a pretty decent repair budget. I haven't spent very much at all out of that. The phone is a monthly, so we usually expend that right down to the penny.
When you talk about repairs, what, considering this is a town building, what are you talking about that would come? Would it be like if you had them come and fix the door for some reason? Because it was squeaky. Does that come out of your repairs budget?
It's a little muddy. They take care of a lot of our repairs and maintenance. This is kind of like a buffer that's there to take care of the things that we kind of ask for to be done special. You know, like if we want, you know, to add an outdoor camera or an outdoor light or a camera or something, we would cover that out of our budget. Because we're asking for it to be added extra to the building.
And above and beyond the routine maintenance.
Right, so they take care of, you know, all the regular maintenance for the most part. And.
Do they take care of the painting?
Yes.
So when's the last time the buildings were painted?
It's been a bit. They did do these rooms back when you had Dave and, I can't remember his name, Patrick. Dave and Patrick did like this room. So I was thinking that the other day. We are in a bit of a need for a new painting in some of our public spaces, like the community room. We need a good carpet shampoo and a painting. So this is the time of year to ask for it too because in the autumn season, they might be willing to come and do it. We do have a lot of the paint left over from the building so that they have a paint. It's just getting the power.
We still have to rent cleaner here, right?
We do, yeah.
So they just need manpower to come in and use it?
Yeah, so I just put in a request and asked for them to send somebody in to plan to do it when they have time. And we get added to their list. So you kind of have to ask for stuff like that special. Otherwise, they do it on their own rotation. But we have a coffee stain in there right now that needs to be treated. We did have any feedback on getting the door standing? Not yet.
The front door just coming in, I noticed the trim was kind of hanging.
Yeah.
The weather stripping.
Weather stripping. Yeah. It's just hanging there. I noticed that today. It was chilly in there. I can put in a, I can put in a request to have that. Little things like that, you know, shouldn't be a problem. The bigger projects.
This is very helpful. I know I was kind of the one that spearheaded this discussion about the curiosity of this. So this is very, very helpful.
Awesome.
Thank you for doing that.
You're welcome. It just kind of shows you, you know, because for those of you that work here, Candace had kind of brought up like the warrants. And she's like, well, you know, that's good and all, but you know, like where are all, where is this money coming from? And like, what is it looking like? How much do you have left? Things like that. So this kind of helps show you.
Did you do the budget for next?
Not yet. We have not received a budget request yet.
Wow, it's getting late. Usually, well, it used to come in February, then it was January, now it's December.
Yeah. So, you know, I'm kind of, kind of interested to see when that's going to roll through.
Because they'll put the percentage of what you can do.
Yeah, usually they'll tell us if we can have a little increase here or there.
The cost of living is huge. I know. So it's, you know.
Yeah, that would be nice to see.
It's been a huge thing with every workforce out there that, you know, that you can't give a 2% when the cost of living is a 9 to 15%.
Yeah, it's tough, for sure. So we'll see what that comes out as. I'll let everybody know when I get that. Yeah, I also keep a spreadsheet of, you know, what I spend and how I'm doing monthly. And that just kind of shows you where we're at. I usually don't have too much of an issue staying within all of these boundaries. So I have a pretty decent budget for what we're working with, I think. Anyone have any questions about that? We have no policy work for the month and I just have warrants. Do you want to do those first and then we can do others? Okay. I don't think we have Janice do it since Kate and Paula are both not here.
I don't know. Or. Terms of signing?
Yeah.
Do you want to say you need to sign it?
So they'll have to come in and sign it?
Or we can hold them and do them next month if.
It works. It's, because I know in the past, we just went to the last person who ran the chair. Was either one or the two were at the meeting. Because anybody can sign as long as the board approves them to sign it. It's up to you guys. Do you want to do the warrants or do you want to hold them to next month?
I guess it's fine. I think just no.
So the first warrant is Go Net Spend eighty nine ninety four. Midwest Tapes LLC one seventeen ninety for the total of two oh seven eighty four. Baker &amp; Taylor six fifty seven oh nine. Mango Languages nine thirty seven fifty five. Total of fifteen hundred ninety four dollars and sixty four cents. The third one is Go Net Spend for eighty nine ninety four. Baker &amp; Taylor three seventy one oh five. Midwest Tapes LLC one nineteen fifty eight. And Demco three ninety two twenty. And total of nine seventy seventy seven warrants for this month. How many can motion to accept the warrants is red?
All the dates.
The dates.
They've pretty good turnout tonight, aside from Paula.
Oh, well, the friends meeting is going.
Oh, they're going really well. We have our treasurer, Xander. He has been wonderful. Hannah has been fulfilling in the secretary. She is, her husband Matt is the one that runs our D and D group.
Oh, okay.
So she kind of came in and, you know, said, well, I'm interested in helping, but I'm in school, so I don't have a lot of time. And so I had her help me with the book sale one night. And then I kind of, you know, sent out a personal invitation to have her come to our friends meeting. And I kind of roped her in. And she's like, she loves libraries. She's very enthusiastic. So she kind of just like took on this position of being the, you know, step in secretary. And she made this amazing, I'll, I'll give you guys all one when we leave. She made this amazing like end of year flyer for the friends. That gives like a breakdown of how many programs we had, how many people attended, how much we sold in the book sale. She had like a little picture of the kids that went to the, they went to the Emily Dickinson house. Supported that, so she had a picture. She did a really great job. Thank you. Amazing.
Fresh energy.
Absolutely.
The friends needed that.
Yeah, so we had the last meeting, they both came. And my volunteer on Thursday nights, Linda, is also coming and joining the meetings and thinking about possibly taking on a role to help out. And Mary Morse is here and Gloria came. So it's, you know, we lost, we lose Leah. She's still part of the friends, but she's not going to be coming to the meetings because they're at night and she prefers not to drive at night. So we kind of like, don't have that. You know, she was really kind of the backbone of the friends for such a long time, doing the book sales and everything. So it's nice to have a couple of people kind of buffer because we were looking a little sad. There was one meeting, it was just me and Xander and Leah. And we were like, okay, all in favor. Like, I don't know if I can bow. This is strange. But so it's, it's going well. Got a little bit of, you know, breath of fresh air being breathed into the group. We're hoping to maybe get a couple of new people if we can. See if maybe they can branch out to their friends and get people involved. We need some fresh ideas for.
Yeah.
Yeah, because like the plant sale flip flopped and, yeah, our book sales are hanging on, but no, barely. The basket sale, you know, we did a really great job, but really like the main people that did the basket sale were Jean and Janice. Like I have to give them so much credit. They made so many of the baskets. You know, we did have about six or seven baskets donated, but the majority came from, from them and our volunteers helping Denise helped put stuff together and maybe at least our basket sale. You know, we, I think we did that one year and it was really cute. People, a lot of people enjoy that. And I think a lot of people like to donate. Like I've had a bunch of people come in and just want to give me money for the baskets and have me give them away. Like, oh, you give it to whoever you, I'm like, no, that's not how this works. I don't want the basket, I want you to take the basket. I just want to donate. So I've had quite a few patrons just donate to the sale without even taking anything. It's nice to see, I mean, I know it's a hard time for people financially, but it's nice to see some people wanting to make that, that effort. So there's hope for our friends group. It's just been a little rough.
I, I would like to say a little bit about the friends. Kate and I were able to go to the coffee and chocolate event and Denise came in kind of mid, mid season there.
To get food.
Yeah, to get food. So she came in for some goodies. But first of all, I want to talk about the program. The program was phenomenal. It was just the best program. I just, I can't say enough wonderful things about the program. So Xander and, is it his wife?
Yes.
Was there and Hannah was there. So in, towards the end of the workshop, Hannah gets up and say, wait, 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 everyone. And she gives this plug for the friends. It was just fabulous. It was so fabulous. So what do I do? I go up and I say, hi, I'm Candace and one of the trustees. And, you know, we appreciate all the hard work that you do and we support you. And we, you know, we're definitely all about partnering with you. And I think that's really important for us as trustees to really recognize the friends as a partnership, you know? And I think we do. It just was so nice to put a face to these people we hear about. So it was just, it was really, and Kate was there and, you know, Kate did a little plug too and congratulated all their hard efforts and.
Well, we used to have someone from the friends come to our meeting. And we used to have someone from the trustees go there. So we always have a representative from both, you know? So we knew they would give us an update every month of what they're doing. And we would come in and kind of, you know, kind of give an update what we're thinking of.
Yeah.
You know, which is something probably where we probably should get back to now that COVID is over and try to get both sides working together.
Yeah.
Because that would be fun.
Yeah, it was a great program. I was so excited. Finally got to have her. I've been having my, my sights set on this program person for a long time. Because she does all this chocolate stuff. He doesn't like chocolate. And so when she did the coffee one, I was like, okay, this is the time I'm asking. Like, I'm going for it. We've got new blood on the friends group. Can we do this? And they're like, sure. I'm like, yes.
She also does that self-help workshop too. That sounded really interesting.
I think that would be great. I'm thinking like.
Self-care, you know?
That's like a really good avenue to go down. I would love to do more things about like, you know, even like meditation and breathing and stress relief. I think, you know, kind of following the trends of what, you know, people are in need of. And I think that's a really great one. I didn't know she did that. So I'm glad you pointed that out.
I actually, I'll send you the picture. I took a picture of the book. She wrote a book about it.
Okay.
And then she talked about doing this workshop, so.
We'd love to have her back.
She has a website too. Did you get that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep, I do have that, so I'll.
Maybe it's on there. I didn't look at it yet.
She does have, she has a huge list of all the different things that she does. And it's quite extensive.
Where's she from?
She's from Cheshire, Connecticut. It's like about an hour, hour and a half from here. We think we paid a thirty five dollar travel fee to have her come.
That's all?
Yeah. I mean, she's pretty young.
But the program was a few months.
Yes, it was, I think, two hundred and ninety nine dollars for a program for up to forty people, which we had about fifteen. It wasn't wildly attended, but this time of year, it's really hard to get people, especially grownups.
I'd make something around Valentine's Day. Yeah, I know.
Ooh, yeah, that's a great idea. Have her come back.
You would.
I might be more mobile then.
Yes. Yeah, I would hope so.
Back, I'm back to the walker, so you know, you're not mobile, I am right now.
Don't let Janice know that. You're still on the walk.
No.
It's, and well, I can tell you afterwards and I'll, I'll call Janice and tell her my experiences. It's not between this, because I'm on this is because of the outside. I don't know if I'm walking, if I'm going to have a patch of ice. I'd rather have two solid hands on something than a cane going out and I'm on my butt and back in the hospital again. So they'll, in the winter, they prefer you to stay with the walker as much as possible. And I'm only using it as a, you know, just like a slight balance, you know? I don't limp when I use the walker.
I'm a night owner out there on the ice.
So are you still able to run or are they running? And everything that happens in the children's programs, are you still able to?
Most, for the most part, we have like our reading to dogs is someone from the outside that comes in and he runs that. Our D and D group is run by Matt. Trying to think, Sawyer, one of our junior volunteers runs the Magic the Gathering group. So he's been keeping that up. One of the moms of one of our book group, our bookworms, the younger kids that do a book group, she's been stepping in to help out so that we can continue having their book group.
The playgroup?
The playgroup is run by Marty. She's from the collaborative for education. So she continues to do the book, the playgroup. So aside from, you know, the usual not having someone.
Contest and all those specialty matches that Janice does.
Of course, she made like a bunch of take and make things. So the kids were still able to come in and take the crafts home and do the crafts or do them here. She left up this cute table with like Mr. Potato Heads that kids can, you know, make their own Mr. Potato Heads. And so she was able to kind of do that stuff to keep those going. And just like the general contact in the children's room, you know, if we go over and help as much as we can, but it's not quite the same, you know? Ms. Jan knows that entire room, you know, back and forth. So it's, it's been okay. Just a few times when someone came in and was a little disappointed that Ms. Jan wasn't here because, you know, she knows exactly what they're talking about. But I have like the contact lists for everyone who does attend like the D and D and the Magic. So if anything gets canceled, I can call and contact them. And I've been ordering books for their little book room. It's been okay. We've been hanging in there, making it work as much as possible. But it's not the same, of course.
So you have the holiday winter activities on here. Did you talk about that yet?
Not really. Put that on there when I made this agenda like two weeks ago. We really kind of, our holiday stuff is a little bit dwindling down now. We have a couple of adult take and make crafts that are still happening. There's one this week and there's one for next week. Those get put out on Tuesday, so I have some if anyone's interested in making a craft.
Now, what happened with the gnome thing now that it's known? I know all of them.
We do?
Yeah, I do.
I was thinking that.
They were good clues. If you're a Grammy person, they were great clues.
Oh, I'm, I'm going to tell Jean you said that because she was really stressing about her clues.
No, they were great clues. Did you see it? Take a look at it.
Yes.
They're great clues.
A townwide gnome hunt. So we, this time, certain businesses and other landmarks in town are hosting a little cardboard cutout gnome. And you have a sheet of clues and you go find them.
Are they in full sight or are they hidden?
Yes, they are. We've tried to make sure they're in full sight. I was thinking, because there's one that I know of that I drive by and I'm like, he's definitely covered in snow. But he's high enough up that I think once the sun melts him a little bit, maybe he'll be popping back out. I haven't checked to see what he looks like now, but.
I picked the thing up Tuesday, so I'm like, okay, I'm going out Wednesday. So I'm going to try to go through the key, you know, the thing I said, I'm only, I only drive, you know, the therapy and back. So I'm going to try to do my drive around those streets or whatever to get there and come home a different way to see if I can find it.
So they're, they're still in place?
Yeah, they're still in place. It runs until the nineteenth.
Oh, all right.
We have amazing prizes. The A to Z Science Store in Northampton donated a fifty dollar gift card for the kids. So whoever wins that, like they're going shopping. And then for the adults, we have a whole bunch of businesses in town that gave like a haircut and gave an oil change and this and that. Like that's all going to one person. So whoever wins is getting like a really good, I keep telling people, do it. Even if you think it's corny, do it because it's really fun and the prizes are awesome. You know, the community, even the people who didn't host a gnome this year were happy to donate a gift or, you know, a prize, which I thought was really cool. And they're a little easier this year. Last year with our reindeer, it was a little difficult for some people, but this year it's a little, little simpler. We've got that going on. Our basket sale is still going on until the twenty third. And.
Do you have January programs?
January programs, right now we have just our normal. We've got our book group. We have quilting, knitting. We're starting the Wednesday knitting group again. So our knitting group wants to start knitting again on Wednesdays. So we've got that going on. And I don't think I have anything lined up specially yet, but I'm working on it. Once all of this wild and crazy holiday stuff is over, we'll start planning toward the, the next coming months. But our book group had, we had our grownup book group and they did like a book swap. I had wrapped up a bunch of books and everybody got to open one and they did a book swap and they had their little Christmas party. That was nice. Everybody seemed to enjoy that. So then our quilting group had their little holiday shindig. They made so much food. My diet has, unless everyone's just bringing me food. I'm like starving. But, so I will, next month I will give everyone an update on what we have going forward, what else we're going to come up with. That's it. Does anyone have any questions or anything else they want to talk about?
I have something to bring up to everyone. I need you to step out.
But actually, I'm going to wait until after the meeting. So it's not on the.
Okay.
Because then it's a good. So we'll end the meeting and ask Jen to step up.
Okay. So let's end our meeting.
Okay, someone want to make a motion to end the meeting?
I'll make a motion to end the meeting. Can I flick it?
All in favor?